Commissioner Sullivan, can you hear us? Commissioner Sullivan, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
All right, we sure can. Hang tight for just a few minutes. I'm still waiting on Commissioner Beckstead and we'll get started.
Thank you.
It's good.
Yeah.
It's not working. Okay. Miss Dollar?
Huh?
She missed his dollar up there.
She needs some water.
I could reach out to him too, Jim.
Rub, rub, rub.
Your t-shirt, she had her whole family there.
I saw that picture.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Might be one of the most decorated ones I've been to. You got to go, didn't you?
Yeah, that's great.
Actually invited. Anybody join, Jim? Laura McCarthy?
Where are you going? Do you take this? Yeah.
Trying to get all in order here.
Uh.
Yeah. About people.
Hold on, this is gonna be a long one, do you please?
Have a busy day? Oh, yeah. Drone service. It's just either small circles or big circles. Prefer the bigger circles because they don't get as dizzy.
I get that. Can you hear volume? Uh? Can you volume up as far as it'll go?
Jim, she needs a panelist password. That is. Is that on the sheet? Don't make a push in there.
Yeah, please.
You can pick up your treat now.
I don't want to. What's your name? Yeah?
Analyst password. I think you're ready when you are.
Okay. Jim, are we good? Okay, all right. We'll go ahead and get started. So I'll call it for order and if everybody will stand and have the invocation.
Father in heaven, we come to thee this afternoon as a commission for San Juan County. Father, we're grateful for the country, the state and the county that we have to live in. And Father, we would ask that thou would bless our first responders, that they would be protected, that thy Spirit will be with them, that they'll be able to conduct the business in a manner that is safe and benefits our citizens in our community. Father, we're grateful for thee, recognize that all that we have comes from thee and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Mr. Lanier?
I pledge allegiance to the Father, the United States of America.
You take that off.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Well, go ahead and get started and so we'll start with the approval of the agenda. And did you have a admission, something to add to?
Madam Chair, we have one change for tonight. Item eight, Mr. Sawyer is going to present that item on new business.
So do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition?
Still moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Post, motion carries. So next we'll go ahead and we'll go to the consent agenda and I'll read these off. There are eight of them. So first one, consideration of approval for regular meeting minutes of March 1st, 2022. Number two, consideration of approval of treasurer check register for February 2022. Three, consideration of approval of finance check register for February 2022. Number four, consideration of approval F522 budget adjustment number eight, resolution number 212251. Did I skip one? Did I skip three? I did, I'm sorry.
So.
Okay. Five, consideration approval of annual law enforcement protection fund. Number six, consideration approval of proposal number 2122-12. San Juan Regional Medical Center, second floor, we have renovations to RMKM Architecture, Inc. of Albuquerque, New Mexico. Seven, consideration for award of proposal number 212213. On-call building automation system and facility HVAC services to Farming to Heating and Metal Farming in New Mexico. Number eight, consideration approval of bid number 212214. County run, what, county run 6000 cold milling services to Old Castle Southwest group of Farming in New Mexico. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, motion to approve the eight consent agenda items.
Second, then.
Of a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Then our new business, the first one will be a presentation by Secretary Probst and State Forester Laura McCarthy. Welcome. You hear us all right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Sullivan hears us?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Do we have Secretary Probst?
Good afternoon, Jim.
Hi, thank you for coming. And do we also have State Forester McCarthy?
Good afternoon, I am here, it's, I need another minute to get the slides up correctly.
Okay.
And to share the screen, I'll work on it as quickly as I can here.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, you all have copies of the presentation in front of you, hard copy, so it'd make it easier to follow along.
Can you move your right foot back?
I apologize, the bandwidth, I'm having immunity bandwidth issues today. I'm gonna share it in this view, hopefully this.
Oh, yeah, there you go. We sit down, we get the.
It's not ideal, but. Are you seeing?
We see that now.
Okay, there's some extra stuff, but hopefully Secretary is just gonna be okay with you.
Yes, that looks great, Laura, thank you so much. Commissioners, are you ready for us to dive right in?
Yes, and if you can enlarge that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, that's, that's what I, that's where I was, all right, I don't, I'm not sure.
Maybe if you go to the view and do.
Well, it's in, yeah, let's see, maybe it will, let's just try it. Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much, okay, we're good to go.
All right, well, good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you so much for inviting us to join you today. My name is Sarah Cottrell Probst, I'm the Cabinet Secretary of the New Mexico Energy, Minerals and Natural Resources Department. And as you know, I'm joined by Laura McCarthy, our State Forester, who is, she and her team are helping to spearhead this effort. So we want to tell you about our uniquely New Mexico 30 by 30 initiative that the Governor kicked off with an executive order last year. And it is an effort to conserve 30% of the lands and waters in New Mexico by 2030. The definition of conserve is something that we're going to talk about and we're going to be collecting input on. And that's really where I think a lot of the questions that people have center around the definition, so we're gonna talk about that. But Laura, you could go to the next slide. So the 30 by 30 executive order identified a committee of state government entities. So myself and Energy Minerals and Natural Resources Department, these are all the members on the screen here, but the Department of Agriculture, Environment Department, State Engineer, Indian Affairs Department, Department of Game and Fish, Outdoor Recreation Division of the Economic Development Department, and the State Land Office are all members per the executive order. And then we have a number of folks listed here who are helping to staff the initiative, the official designees are in the first two columns. So the executive order, some of the benefits that were identified, and the full title is Protecting New Mexico's Lands, Watersheds, Wildlife and Natural Heritage. But the benefits are to support the economy, sustain traditional ways of life, provide drinking water, ensure food security, preserve biodiversity, and provide recreational opportunities that promote human health and well-being. And the executive order details a lot of that and requires causes, which take up a first few pages. I'm hearing a bit of an echo, I'm not sure if that can be corrected, I think some people might not be on mute. But anyway, I'll keep going. So the 30 by 30 process, the role of the committee, the committee is an advisory group only to the Governor. So the committee is not making decisions or final actions, things like that. It is advisory and providing advice and recommendations to the Governor on issues raised in the executive order, as well as in the federal government, America the Beautiful Initiative. So the committee will be coordinating between existing agencies and programs, using the best available science, commitment to equity, robust stakeholder engagement, timely recommendations on state or federal policies, and ensuring that the state's efforts are accurately reflected in the American conservation and stewardship atlas, federal effort. Some of the core principles of the process, one is to respect tribal sovereignty. We understand that a lot of the acreage in New Mexico is sovereign land. Tribes and pueblos are not bound by the executive order, but we are going to be kicking off a consultation process next week with tribes and pueblos written to them outlining the initiative, asking for opportunity to discuss it and for input. So we'll work with the tribes and pueblos to determine how any conservation designation for sovereign lands should be included, even if we're not making exceptions about tribal lands from the start. Another core principle is respect for private property rights. Private property owners are gonna be integral to succeeding on the 30 by 30 effort. And that's, and that's, the committee can use existing programs and authorities, there's no new power of eminent domain or anything like that. All conservation activity on private land will continue to occur on strictly voluntary basis. And we have a lot of land in Mexico doing amazing things on their lands and rehets. We want to continue to encourage that and to try it when it's appropriate towards 30 by 30. So we're gonna be developing, developing expand options available to landowners and ensuring that the good work that they do is recognized. And Laura and I have already signed a number of groups to represent private landowners and keep doing so as we move forward.
Secretary, I think we need to solve the feedback.
I wonder if.
Have Sullivan mute? He is, he is. He's already muted.
Okay, we have a Commissioner that we're asking him to mute and we're checking our mic here also.
It might be there, it looks like it's green on my screen there, it's a Commission.
Okay, that's good to know.
Okay.
Were you all able to hear on this slide?
Yes, we hear everything really well here. Do you still hear it?
Right, yes. Okay, I will.
Okay.
That's pretty tough.
Still?
Do you still hear that?
Yeah, we, it's fine when you're speaking, but when any of us, I think it's echoing from your, your room.
Okay. Our, our normal IT person unfortunately is not here and we have the great assistance of the interrupt. What's that?
No pressure.
Okay. Being very helpful, so we'll, we'll figure something out.
Oh, there you go, that might, that might work. Okay, so carrying on with the core principles of 30 by 30. So maintaining adaptability in a changing climate is really important. Land management is not a static activity, it's dynamic. And so the best science tells us that active land management is gonna play an essential role in mitigating and adapting to climate-related risks like drought and wildfire. And so to promote flexibility, this committee, you know, is not gonna be recommending new wilderness areas or other designations that severely restrict the ability to adapt to changing conditions in the future. And I think that's really important to note, we, this needs to be flexible and durable over time and not just a snapshot at any one moment. We also want to preserve a role for natural working lands. Similar to private property rights I mentioned earlier, natural working lands, including active management of farms, ranches and forests, promotes a number of the conservation values that are identified in the executive order. And so the contribution of these lands needs to be counted when we're defining what conservation means in New Mexico. An example might be, we have a soil, Healthy Soils Initiative through the New Mexico Department of Agriculture. Participants there, you know, might, might be considered for inclusion here. So I'm gonna hand over to Laura McCarthy, who's gonna talk about the federal America the Beautiful and 30 by 30 and give you some background because these two are very much related and we want to be, have New Mexico's effort be both unique to New Mexico, but totally counted and complementary to the federal effort. And then we'll circle back to the New Mexico effort at the end. Go ahead, Laura.
Great, thanks, Secretary. So the administration came out with this America the Beautiful initiative, also sometimes called a 30 by 30 initiative in May of 2021. And that's what, for us, planted the seeds, that it might be a good idea for New Mexico to have a committee of state agencies that are affected so that we could be in a strong position to provide input to the federal government and help their thinking by being able to articulate what's important to New Mexico. The federal America the Beautiful has eight core principles. I'm not gonna go through these, you have them written down, because I really want to talk more about their focus areas. These are the places where they are anticipating that they are going to have some initiatives. And these are the, the focus areas that down the line, we as New Mexico will want to respond to them with our input on these particular topic areas. And, you know, it's a range of things, but I think what's most important to us are the tribally-led conservation and restoration priorities, the access for outdoor recreation, and the voluntary conservation emphasis here, and probably the jobs as well. I do better advancing slides when they're, it's not me giving the presentation. So the, we haven't actually told you what the executive order has in terms of what does 30 by 30 mean. And so that's what we do in this slide. The executive order sets the goal of having 30% of all lands in New Mexico conserved by 2030 with an additional 20% designated as climate stabilization areas. And yes, this is the same goal that is set out in the federal America the Beautiful. And there are a lot of questions around it. And I know there's a variety of responses when people see this definition, from a lot of concern to some enthusiasm. And it really, at this point, you can read a lot into it or not because the terms aren't defined yet and the terms are really important. What does it mean to say 30% of all lands conserved? And what is a climate stabilization area? These are the things that the committee that we've set up is having to wrestle with. And it's very, it's very challenging and we're appreciating the input that we've been getting. Just a couple of definitions to put out in front of you. One of them comes from the IUCN and they define protected area as a clearly defined geographical space, recognized, dedicated and managed through legal or other effective means to achieve the long-term conservation of nature with associated ecosystem services like water provision and cultural values. Another definition comes from one of the science peer-reviewed papers that stands behind the 30 by 30 initiative. And they put out the idea that the climate stabilization areas describe intact and semi-intact lands that store carbon. So these are some of the things that the committee is looking at, but by no means is the committee confining itself to these definitions. So where we are in the process, we are working on our, our plans for public engagement. We've been getting invites like, such as the invite to, to participate with you all today from a variety of people and we always say yes and put the, you know, find a time that it works for everybody to have those meetings. We are planning public listening sessions, but likely not until we have some draft definitions for people to respond to. We will, though, item number two, have draft, draft definitions at some point and be seeking public feedback. We are also in the midst of reviewing existing programs such as Forest and Watershed Restoration Program that the Forestry Division runs, or the River Stewardship Program that the Environment Department runs. Those are just two examples. We're looking at, at the whole suite of existing programs to identify opportunities and barriers for New Mexico to reach these conservation goals. And then per the executive order, we have an annual report to the Governor and our first one will be due in December of 2022. I think I've kind of already talked about this, but just to reiterate that there are a whole suite of existing programs and authorities across the multiple state agencies that are involved. And we want their good and current work to be recognized. There are some, some of those programs do include acquisition of land and conservation easements, we want to be transparent about that, but that is not the only type of program. Another example is New Mexico Department of Agriculture has a Healthy Soils Program that is very, very popular, that is all about voluntary conservation on agricultural lands, just as an example. And here is a set of, this is actually gonna be two slides showing, so in this case, we've got four agencies, EMNR, State Land Office, NMDA, Environment Department in bold, and then underneath the programs that we're looking at. And on this slide, three more departments, Cultural Affairs, Game and Fish, and the Outdoor Recreation Division and their programs. And I believe this is our last slide and this is our tentative timeline. Secretary, do you want me to cover this or do you want to wrap up with this yourself?
Thanks, Laura, I'm glad to wrap up. So thank you, and I'm sorry that the first couple of slides were garbled, we're glad to send these slides to anybody who, you know, who wants to get a handout from them. So looking ahead, so we have been working on developing this 30 by 30 framework, we have launched a webpage, it is part of the Energy Minerals and Natural Resources Department's webpage, and we will continually update that as there are documents to review or drafts to comment on or meetings to be, that people are invited to attend. We're having agency-level discussions with stakeholders regarding our individual programs and we're coordinating, as I mentioned earlier, we're coordinating with the Indian Affairs Department on tribal outreach and engagement. That's, as you know, a special type of relationship, government to government. So we will be having separate meetings with tribal leaders over the next few weeks to brief them on 30 by 30 and to start engaging with them and talking about how we might work together, both towards getting tribal lands potentially designated or potentially included in the 30 by 30 count, as well as tribal interests that extend beyond, beyond sovereign land. We also will be having virtual information and listening sessions for the public, those, as Laura mentioned, are forthcoming, haven't been scheduled yet, but we will make sure that the county is aware of those. And then we are responding to the Department of the Interior's request for input on the Conservation Atlas, which is a very technical set of comments that we, that we are submitting. In the April to June timeframe, we'll be developing these draft definitions that Laura talked about, this is really, really the heart of the work. So the definitions will be for conserved lands as well as climate stabilization lands in New Mexico. And then we'll be doing an RFI, Request for Information, to solicit feedback on those draft recommendations and see what tweaks or suggestions the public has for us. Later in the summer, heading into the fall, we'll host additional virtual and in-person meetings or workshops, depending on the status of the pandemic, but right now we're awfully optimistic about being able to do in-person meetings. And then we'll be reviewing and organizing and going through all of the good input we get and identifying gaps in state programs. And that's, that timeline is important, it's not just random, that lines up into state agency budget timelines as well when we submit our draft budgets in September 1 and looking at where we need to beef things up to serve this, this initiative. And then finally, in October to November 2022, we'll be drafting and releasing our annual report that the executive order requires us to produce for the government. we'll be drafting and releasing our annual report that the executive order requires us to to produce for the governor. It'll include all the things we've discussed, as well as proposed definitions for the governor's consideration. We also will be including an analysis of barriers and opportunities to implementing the goals of the executive order. And we'll continue to engage with the the federal government as they, as their initiative evolves as well and review our next steps discussed for Thirty by Thirty Conservation. And this certainly will not end at the end of two thousand and twenty two, but this seemed like an awful lot of work. And so we wanted to share with you our plans for between now and the end of the year. And then hopefully we'll have have an opportunity to come back next year and talk to you about where we are and continue to get feedback. But again, really appreciate you hearing us out, and we really look forward to your questions on this initiative. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Secretary Katrel Probst and then State Forest McCarthy. So at this time, from the, I want to see if the commissioners have any comments or questions.
Madam Chair. I was the one that asked, you know, to hear something different on the Thirty by Thirty. So you explained a lot and provided a lot of information. I really like that core principle of respect for tribal sovereignty. And I know that the Pueblos and the other tribes here probably really appreciate that that was included. And I like hearing the words like stakeholder, stewardship, restoration, healthy soil, wildlife program, the ecosystem, changing climate, cultural values, all these are really vital. And it seems like you you have a timeline, and this is a work in progress. So I wish you the best in getting all the stakeholders and the steward, people who are valued stewardship, giving you a lot of input. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner. And add that we are really, really excited about taking this holistic look at all the programs across state government. It feels right to get everybody together and see how all these efforts that have been happening somewhat independently add up to something major for New Mexico and how we can expand on it going forward.
Are there any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Bexton.
So it's going to take us a year just to define what 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 it is we're doing? I I was confused about that. Basic definitions of conservation, it's going to take a year to come up with a definition?
Laura, go ahead. I try, all right? Secretary Madam Chair, it's surprisingly hard. And just let me get in the weeds a minute to explain why.
I'm sorry, we're hearing echo again in the room while she answers.
Okay, so you see here, or you saw on the slides the reference to the Department of Interior Conservation and Stewardship Atlas. And that is connected to something that is called the National Protected Areas Database that you can actually go online and look at it. And you can see how for for the every state, they have put all lands into four categories. Code one is some kind of federal designation. Code like wilderness or roadless areas. Code two is just a step below that. So a wilderness study area would go into code two. Code three is federal ownership and managed for timber grazing or other oil and gas, other purposes. And code four is everything else. And the way they, the way the Protected Areas Database looks at the federal land in New Mexico, only six percent is in code one and two. And we know that that's not right. That if you look at code one, two, and three, that is the federal lands that have active management, but also have really important conservation values. It's not right not to count those. But do we count them all? If we do, then we're at, we are at the thirty percent. Or do we count some of them? And if we count some of them, what are the criteria? And what are the values that we're looking to conserve? And how do they connect to the direction that the governor gave us in the executive order? That starts to get really complicated and technical and challenging. That's number one. And then number two is voluntary conservation by 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 private landowners. That is also something that we really want to capture. But how are we going to define that? Is it, you know, you could argue, just as an example, if if land is enrolled in the Farm Bill Wetland Conservation Program, then it should count. Okay, that's one way of doing it, but we've got all kinds of things like that that we have to sort through in order to come up with these draft definitions. And I admit, like, we thought it was going to be a little easier than it than it's going to be. But we had a meeting on March third of the committee with a draft definition, and we ended up practically scrapping it, and we have a lot more work to do. So I hope that with this long winded explanation, you understand why we feel like it's going to take a while. It's not going to take a full year to get a draft, but but it's going to take us, where are we, March fifteenth, at least three more months, I believe.
And Laura, I would just add, Commissioner, I mean, it's a great question. I had the same reaction. Come on, let's get after it. Like, we need to get to the real meat of the work. But, you know, it it is complicated. These are terms that we all sort of think we understand or have a common understanding of what they mean until you start drilling down in the way that Laura was just describing. And we need to be able to make sure that we bring the public along, so people know what we're doing, why we're doing it, and that there's as much buy in as possible from across New Mexico so that this is a durable initiative over time. And that's why we're we're trying to take, take the time, not too much time, but take the time to to try to make sure that we get it right and hear as many people along the way as we can.
Does that answer your questions?
Enough. One of the other things that I wrote down was, one of the goals is to promote flexibility. But and I hope you can appreciate that I I just don't see how there can be flexibility in a a large government, long term conservation project. That just doesn't say flexibility to me. You know, and including conservation easements, you know, easements sound pretty permanent, not 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 flexible. So I don't know if a landowner enters into a conservation easement, if they have the flexibility to to pull it back out. It it sounds pretty permanent to me. So what are you, what do you mean by flexibility? Flexibility of this committee to define and and say what they want to do? Or the actual flexibility of the program?
Secretary, I'm happy to address that. Okay. Yes, that that's also a really good question. What we were thinking about is, as we deal with the impacts of things like long term drought and increased wildfire risk, I'll I'll give you an example that is within my own area of expertise. You know, one of the challenges we have with, for example, a federal wilderness designation is that we are not able to do hazardous fuels reduction that is cut and remove overgrown brush and trees in areas in fire adapted forests that have missed natural fire cycles and need trees taken out. And that is a management option that is foreclosed because of the designation. And so what we were intending in in raising the issue of flexibility is as the temperature increases, there are going to be things that we need to do in terms of active management on the land, and we don't want to foreclose those options. Another example could be, for example, the the increased invasion of cheat grass into rangelands. And there may be things that we want to do to to favor native grass production as opposed to cheat grass. And we want to make sure that that's flexibility that is preserved. Doesn't get it the question that you raised about conservation easements. I think that's an interesting, it's not something that we've, it's an interesting question that we would need to think about because it may depend on what the desired conservation goal is. If it's preventing development, conservation easement might make sense. If it's some other purpose, it may not.
To say the only way to get to thirty percent to get to these science driven goals is to aggregate all of these programs that Laura is describing across state government. And some of them are less flexible, like a conservation easement, although they have some some important attributes. But there are all these other programs, like what Laura is describing, that we that that do have flexibility, that need flexibility. And some programs like Healthy Soils, you know, landowners do have the flexibility to opt in or opt out or or do different things. So we're looking at ways that as we either add programs or as we adapt programs that currently exist, that they, that flexibility is something we aspire to. And I know that sounds a little fuzzy, but it is important for all the real world examples that Laura just described.
Commissioner Bexton, do you have any more questions or?
I'll let Commissioner Linner. All right. Thank you, Chairman. This is actually the second presentation that Chairman and I have have set in on. The first one was a federal with the Interior and the BLM. And I will say your presentation is very nice and well put together, much better than theirs. Not to be mean, but it really is. But I do have some questions. What what's really driving this thirty thirty? And is it really thirty thirty, or is it actually fifty percent? Because you you talk about taking the the thirty percent of private lands, and then you say, but additional twenty percent designated in climate stabilization areas. Is that thirty percent or is that fifty percent?
Laura, go ahead.
Yeah, I asked the same question, and I actually went back and read the the book that was that was published by the late E.O. Wilson on this topic in order to understand what it was getting at. And this is going to tie back to those definitions because I think it does add up to fifty percent. But the climate stabilization, the idea there is that climate stabilization lands really have are entirely voluntary and don't have any kind of restrictions on them. And I think honestly, in New Mexico, are, and this is, this is, I'm just kind of putting this out there. But if you, if, once we come up with that definition of what is climate stabilization areas, I think that's going to be on its own already forty percent of the state because we're a mostly natural land state with, you know, some, with active management on some of those lands. But like, the amount that's paved is very, very small compared to the area of the whole state. So it may be fifty percent when you add conserved to climate stabilization, but we may already be far beyond that. Secretary, I I, you haven't heard me say this before, so maybe you want to make a comment?
No, I think I think that's, I mean, that's helpful. This is, it's based in science. You know, the the whole international movement on Thirty by Thirty is based in science. And as Laura said, you know, we we want, I could see, you know, urban, some of our urban forestry programs and areas counting towards climate stabilization areas because when you have more tree cover in an area with a lot of pavement, it can reduce temperatures and really help with with cooling. That's important, you know, it's not a state park or a national park, but it is important, and it's important for, you know, the the bus gate through through Albuquerque is important for as a flyway. There are just, there are things that are going to count in this area, this twenty percent climate stabilization that maybe aren't at the same level as a conservation definition would be. So again, that's why the details are going to matter and why we need to take at least a little bit of time to to make sure we get it right this summer.
And we, do you know how much private land we have here in in San Juan County?
Not offhand, no.
I don't think we have the county by county in front of us.
No, and actually, yeah. Do you know? Was it a rhetorical question?
Yeah, let me help you out a little. So San Juan County, we have six and a half percent of private land. You have sixty five percent of the Navajo Nation, twenty five percent BLM, three and a half percent state of New Mexico. So if you take fifty percent of our private land in San Juan County, that puts us at three and a half percent. So my question is, you you talked about in your presentation that you seeked out public support or public, I don't know what to call it, input. What input have you received from San Juan County?
Let me start, Laura, Commissioner, and then we can, like, you can fill in. So first of all, we're not taking fifty percent of anybody's land. That's not, that's not happening. And we are, most of the public input is in front of us rather than behind us. So, you know, we just have the the executive order that's been issued. The committee has started to meet. We've started to lay out what our process is going to be. We're having meetings like this one. We're we're being invited to come and sort of talk about the the effort and what's in front of us, but the public input is in front of us. We've had almost the polar opposite type of meeting with Curry County, where they have a ton of private land. And, you know, we we have these places in New Mexico that are balancing really different types of land ownership and land stewardship. And we have to come up with a program and a system that works for everybody. And that, again, that's part of why we want to take some time this summer. So we're not telling anybody what they have to do on their on their private land. We hope that there are landowners who are doing great conservation efforts or agricultural efforts that would count towards this initiative and that they'd want to be part of it. But we're not, it's not mandatory.
So then what what lands, what lands would you be grabbing then? If it's not private land, if it's not farmland, if it's not land that we hunt on, if it's not land that we recreate on, what what lands exactly are you targeting?
So again, we're not, it's not about acquiring land per se across the things, about designation designations. So what lands would count towards this goal? So it could be, you know, existing national forest lands that are being managed for conservation. And that might, you know, help us count. There might be grazing, there might not. Certainly could be hunting. So it's really about designations rather than controlling the land or controlling the land ownership. We're going to work with a variety of landowners and land stewards to see what can count towards these science driven goals. I hope that's helpful.
So Curry County was in favor of this?
We haven't asked anybody, any counties for like a outright endorsement, but we had a really good conversation with the county, with the county commissioners and county manager. It was, they had some really thoughtful questions, and it was, it was super helpful.
I apologize. I'm kind of flipping through because I took notes a little bit everywhere. It also brings up water and ocean waves. I mean, obviously, we don't have ocean here, but where are you gonna take the water? Are you gonna ha- take the water rights? Are you just gonna prohib- prohibit what waterways we can use recreational for irrigation? Um, and I asked this same question, um, at the last presentation that we got from the federal government. And to be honest with you, they didn't have an answer.
Um, we're not seeking to acquire or control water. Um, I think that there are areas that are important watersheds, um, whether it's for drinking water attributes or ecosystem services, attributes that, you know, merit conservation and perhaps already are being conserved, um, either through the Forest Service or through, um, State Trust Land or what have you. Um, but again, you know, we're not seeking to acquire water rights or anything like that as part of this. And Laura, you may have a more elegant explanation than I do.
Actually, that's a key difference between the governor's executive order and the federal America the Beautiful Initiative. And so the America the Beautiful Initiative does say that it is about uh, conserving lands and waters. And the New Mexico Executive Order, very purposely, is about conserving lands and watersheds. So, um, I, I hear the concern, um, that there could be some taking of water rights and just wanna assure you, that is not on the table.
And we knew that it would be confusing if we did. If we mirrored the federal language, we knew that the conversation about water rights and that's not frankly, an issue in some of the eastern states and other places like. So we, we wanted to stay away from that and leave that to the state engineer.
Any further questions?
Yeah, and I, I apologize because, um, you know, my district is, is primarily farmland and, uh, the thirty thirty is a very scary thing for us. It, it just seems, not only are the water rights very open, open-ended, but that you, in your language, you leave room for um, future taking of, of lands, of kinda changing the rules, moving the goalpost on us. And so that, that, that's a main concern that we have. You know, active land management. You know, there's a lot of terminology, even just in your presentation, that is, is very, um, unnerving for, for my district. I think Mr. Beckstead will have another question. Did you have anything else?
Oh, just one, one quick one. You indicated that, uh, the twenty percent on the climate regions or climate areas was gonna be voluntary. Does that mean that the thirty percent areas are gonna be involuntary?
No, no, it's all, they're all, you know, voluntary. I mean, even in the circumstance of, you know, i- if game and fish acquired a parcel of land for habitat conservation, that would be a willing seller, willing buyer. We're not contemplating and not authorized to use eminent domain as part of this initiative. I'm really hoping to try to alleviate fears from private landowners because I think there's just a lot of, there's and I understand the fear. That's not what this is about.
So you say willing seller, seller and willing buyer, is the program planning on buying large tracts of land?
This committee doesn't have any authority to do anything except make recommendations. Some of the programs, you know, may be able to do that, like there, it already is existing authority, but we're not at this point adding anything in the way of authority. And frankly, I'm more interested in having a better assessment through this effort of where we stand now. I think New Mexico is doing a lot of really great things in conservation and land management. And when I say things like land management, I mean like Laura is talking about forest thinning to, um, to avoid catastrophic wildfires. Um, I mean, things like, you know, responsible agriculture and grazing, um, things that a lot of New Mexicans are already doing. But we need to acknowledge and count and understand how that's contributing to these, to these efforts. And so that's a lot of what we'll be doing over this first year is trying to square that up, both in the state and with the national effort.
And if I can add.
Oh, go ahead.
But just to add to that, so, um, you know, I think the secretary summarized well that New Mexico is already a conservation leader. And one of the reasons uh, that we think the Thirty by Thirty Committee that the executive order set up is gonna help us is that after we get a handle on what is already happening in New Mexico that, that really demonstrates how to do, how conservation can happen um, without, uh, the, the scary things, that we can then convey that to the federal initiative and, uh, in a, in a sense, set a national model of how to go about how one state has gone about conservation in a way that, um, that, uh, honors the, the land, the traditional traditions of, of land use.
Have you, have you sat down and calculated what percentage we're at already?
No, because we need, that's why this definition process is so important because once, once we nail that down, we will do the calculation. The one calculation we have in hand is the one we don't like. And that's the one from the National Protected Areas Database that says that only six percent of New Mexico is currently in that conserved, which would indicate there's a gap between six percent and thirty percent, and we don't think that's accurate. We're, we're.
Exactly. I mean, we think that because, you know, when you count, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. Go ahead.
One last question, uh, one last question. You, you keep saying science-driven goals, science-based. Um, I see one study that's referenced in your, uh, in, in your slides. Are there, are there more studies out there that, that try to tell us what these climate stabilization areas are or what defines them? Or any scientific basis behind them? Um, other than the one study, um, I see, you know, that it's bolded and in, in quotations. I just, I, this is the first I've heard it and, and don't know if it's truly a, uh, a legitimate scientific. You know, I haven't, I haven't read the studies. Is there more than one study, I guess, is what I'm getting at?
Um, yes, sir, there is. Uh, there are a number of, of pu- papers published in peer-reviewed journals on this topic and there are databases, uh, uh, from around the country that are, that are run through the NatureServe, um, project.
And Laura, we're aiming to try to put some of those resources on our website, right? So that folks can read them for themselves.
Commissioner Lanier has another question.
Um, in your presentation, you talked about input. It, have you seeked any input from local governments? I mean, I know we haven't you present tonight, but I think we had to ask you to do that. Have you talked to the local property owners? Have you talked to other local governments?
So we had an opportunity, we have had several opportunities to present, um, on, on this concept. We prevent, presented to the New Mexico Association of Counties. Um, I've prevented, presented to, um, to, uh, we've presented to several landowner groups. Um, we've presented to, as I mentioned, other counties individually. Um, Laura, I'm sure, I know we have a, a working list of all the presentations we've done, but honestly, like the next steps are the most organized part of that. A lot of what we've done so far have, have either been um, because we were hearing concerns and we asked for an opportunity to present or because we were invited to present. Um, but now we are at the point where we will be setting up all come public meetings, nothing special. You don't have to be in the know to, you know, to attend. These will be, um, after we do the, the tribal, um, government meetings, we'll have public meetings, um, to kick the tires on these concepts and hear about people's recommendations and concerns and questions. And, um, we're, we're looking forward to, to that. Laura, I don't know if there's anything else you want to say about.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Secretary. Um, so, so I take it that you are gonna reach out and, and try to get some local government input, not just presentations, but input on their thoughts and.
Yes, and if you have recommendations on the best way to do that, that works for you and the limited time that you have and all the issues that are pressing that you're facing, you know, uh, we're we are open to that, you know, we don't, uh, we, we want this to be something where people feel like they have it, not just feel like, but where they do have an opportunity to give us input, it's reflected in our work.
And thank you, Secretary. And I, I think that would be a, a conversation for you to have with our county manager, uh, to see if we can organs, organize something like that for, uh, input. And, uh, so in light of all the questions we have, I appreciate all the questions because they've answered quite a few of my questions. Um, it, there's one thing that talks about what climate stabilization areas for intact and semi-intact lands that store a relatively large amount of carbon. Um, and it doesn't really define what a large amount of carbon is. And so I guess I have a question about how that's defined or looked at.
That's a great question. Um, that is something that we'll address as we work on the definitions. And in addition, uh, I've been able to hire a position within the Forestry Division whose sole job is figuring out how to, uh, calculate carbon storage for New Mexico. There are a lot of national and regional models and they're not well, they don't translate well to our semi-arid climate. And we've recently secured, uh, a lot of grant funding in order to be able to really dive into that question of carbon storage in forests and rangelands in New Mexico. It will take at least a year to get some answers on that, but we expect to have a really good baseline of current amounts of carbon storage and then where we need to go in the future, where we can go in the future.
Thank you for that answer. And then also, I have a question. If we're talking about areas of conservation, which I remember as a kid learning about conservation, that's been done for however many years. And so i- is there a model to show what climate stabili- climate stabilization is in a conservation area? To kind of take this to a, a model and, because this is pretty expansive.
That's, uh, that's a really great sophisticated question. Laura, do you wanna add to what you just said about that? I mean, I think a lot of what, a lot of what we will be doing is, you know, with this modeling that we're doing with this, um, you know, data review with the new position, they'll be helping us figure out, you know, how do you count? What, what does that look like? What are the numbers? What are the actual numbers in New Mexico for different types of land use activities, whether it's lands that are being, um, you know, where crops are being grown or whether it's a, a national forest that's being well managed to with the type of thinning that we just talked about, um, to prevent catastrophic wildfire. Like, we, we need to have better numbers for what that means right here in New Mexico because we are an incredibly diverse state. The ecosystems are diverse, uh, from north to south and we, you know, we wanna have the, the numbers to back up everything we do.
Thank you. And I guess that you've mentioned several times catastrophic wildfires. And so I'm just, I'm curious, it's just kind of off the cuff wondering, i- is that something that's been looked at instead of all this changing of thirty by thirty? Um, looking at what this means to our land opposed to re-designating, uh, lands?
Well, it's certainly part of it and, um, you know, not, not everything under thirty by thirty is gonna be re-designating lands or land uses or changing them from one ownership to another. That's not, um, that's not it. I think we could just do a much better job with, with what we have. And we, we're fortunate, we did get some, um, some of the federal stimulus dollars to the department to work on expanding our forest management work. Um, it's, it's largely about thinning, either mechanical thinning or prescribed burn. Um, we do that in partnership with the USDA Forest Service. We have a shared stewardship plan between the state and the, and the USDA Forest Service on managing our, our state forests on the highest priority, highest risk, um, need basis, um, including for, for fire and for, for ecosystem services. So that's, um, part of what our department's doing. But state land office, you know, they are, they are really interested in how they can better, um, you know, manage the lands that they're responsible for, both the, um, the incredible benefits that the oil and gas industry brings to the state, but also um, outdoor recreation and grazing leases and things like that. Um, and some of those latter category will probably, you know, they're very eager for some of their land management activities to count towards thirty by thirty. Um, so all these, you know, we, we keep talking about some of the things where we have jurisdiction because there are programs that we know the best, um, like forestry, um, with the state forester here, but there, there are wonderful programs across, across state government. I mean, the Department of Cultural Affairs manages properties that have, um, have, you know, Los Luceros has incredible bus gay, the Farm and Ranch Heritage Museum has a, a fusad and area that they're protecting. So just a lot of programs around the state that we need to, um, to take a look at and see what good work is happening as a baseline.
Thank you, Secretary. And I guess also I wanna, uh, kinda echo what Commissioner Beckstead said. Um, just my background is in health and so everything that we do is evidence-based. And so, uh, for future conversations, I really like to know, uh, this, this, the citation of resources of, of, of the science research and how that impacts what's happening here.
There we go, there we go.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hey, hearing none, then I would like to thank Secretary Cottrell Propst and State Forester McCarthy for coming today and for your, uh, presentation for answering our questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have a presentation from, uh, Tico Time River Resort, Robert Holmes, owner.
My name is Robert Holmes, uh, with Tico Time River Resort. And, uh, we're here because last year we had some issues and concerns, um, where we had aggravated, um, our neighbors. And, um, I guess first and foremost, we just wanted to assure the county and our neighbors that we absolutely want to be a good neighbor. It's very important to us. I guess, uh, twenty twenty-two was, or, uh, last year was a, a huge learning lesson for us. Um, we got into, uh, music, uh, becoming a music venue. And, um, so there was a, a lot of things that are involved with an operation like that that, um, could cause, um, some problems like that we had last year. So um, I guess the number one thing was the River of Souls Festival that happened last year. Right after that festival is when we had, um, a bunch of neighbors that were in here and everyone was very, very upset. And, uh, and I, I was upset myself with how that weekend had, um, had come off. So you know, we had noise complaints from four miles away. I think there was like a hundred and thirty noise complaints or something. And um, the, and we had, we had promised that we would not do an event like that again. Uh, the number one issue was we had outside promoter that had brought in humongous speakers. And, uh, like, the noise, uh, levels were just so insane that it was, it was causing, you know, uh, issues with neighbors from even far away, not just, just the surrounding neighbors. So, um, that's one thing that, that will not happen this year. Um, everything, uh, this year is an in-house production and we'll be only using our PA system that we have already. So um, I think last year that, uh, that event caused, you know, severe concern with neighbors because I, I think what they thought was this is going to be the norm from now on, like this is going to happen every weekend at these noise levels. And, uh, and I could understand, um, why that would be a concern. So, um, this year, uh, last year was a lot of fun, uh, it was a learning lesson, uh, but it was, um, there was definitely some issues and we, we don't wanna be, you know, a bad neighbor, but um, our direction, like I just wanna make sure it was, we were kind of put out as like a place that's, they were called, it said we were kinda like Mardi Gras or something like that. And, uh, I just wanna make sure everybody knows we are a family-friendly resort. Every festival had kids, you know, it was, uh, families, um, so it, we're not looking. So we're not looking, I mean, we don't even sell alcohol because we are trying to be a place that's very family-friendly, a positive uplifting, you know, business organization. So this year, we were trying to do less music and more wellness. So that River of Souls Festival was replaced with a yoga festival. And just overall, we're looking for more positivity, more wellness, fitness, spirituality, things of that nature. And I think the frequency of how much music that we had last year, that's being lessened greatly. So about forty percent less music overall. And Sundays, last year, we were trying to do every Sunday, every weekend with music. And I think that was, that was not a good thing. I don't think that means we'll never have music on Sundays, but as of right now, we have only a few Sundays on holiday weekends, things of that nature. So I think just having generally just less music will be something that'll, the neighbors will appreciate. As far as the stage itself, last year, the neighbors had asked us to do something, to put something on the stage to try to mitigate the noise. We were not able to do that. We did put up like some curtains that we thought might help, and it did not help. So this year, we are building a solid wall on the south side and west side of the stage. I'm not sure if that will, you know, completely mitigate the noise. I don't, I don't think that it will. But I think it, it will be a little helpful. But the noise levels themselves, this year, we're going to monitor with a decibel meter. So I think last year it was, it was just me driving around saying, well, I don't think it's, you know, I think it's that loud. But this year, well, actually, we can take a video with a decibel meter showing these are the actual noise levels at this time and at these locations. And it's something that we're striving for, to try to mitigate noise. And as far as timing goes, the main stage that we have, we're looking to end every evening by ten thirty at the end, having no more noise by eleven o'clock. So that's something that we're offering to, to try to resolve these issues with the neighbors. After that, we're, again, can monitor the noise, but we're trying to keep anything after that to a level that's acceptable. I don't, I don't necessarily think that we're going to appease everyone, but we're trying to do our absolute best to, to be a good neighbor and have noise levels at an acceptable level. Last year, we were, we were understaffed. This year, we are going to have paid staff monitoring the noise, sound engineers that understand what's going on that are own sound engineers. And then again, someone that is actually monitoring the noise with a decibel meter. Fireworks were a concern of the neighbors. We ended up doing fireworks every Saturday night last year. And even though most of the neighbors really enjoy the fireworks show, there was definitely some neighbors that it was, it was, it was causing harm or agitation to their livestock and animals. So this year, what, what we decided, we would do just Memorial Labor Day and Fourth of July weekends. So hopefully that will, will help. Yeah, so I don't know if I forgot anything, but just overall, we're, you know, we want to be a good neighbor. We are still inviting the surrounding neighbors to come and have access at Tico Time for free. Most of the neighbors enjoy coming over and spending time down on the river and listening to music and, and all the activities we have going on there. So we have yoga, fitness, church services this year that we are inviting the neighbors to, you know. So we're trying to make it a community place. So again, most of the neighbors are, really enjoy what's going on there. And, and we're trying to embrace that as much as we can, so. Yeah, I guess, do you guys have any questions?
Do you have any comments or questions?
Madam Chair, I have one. I really appreciate you coming in and taking care of this, you know, before the summer starts. And I do appreciate all of the things that you're doing. Have, do you have any security of your own on staff, like, like just a private security or?
Yeah, I mean, we had security, so we have a security team. This year, it's going to be improved, you know, by the number and then training, things of that nature.
So like eleven o'clock, they'll be going around going, okay, you're a little bit loud?
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, we'll have, this year, we'll have, instead of, you know, like a DJ or promoter, like, down at our pavilion, basically is where we have any after-parties and stuff. People are playing volleyball and hanging out, listening to music and stuff. So last year, it was them just there on themselves, and this year, they'll be a paid staff member. Like, so yeah, twenty-four hour security this year. So we didn't have that at all last year. So, and it's also just helps out with safety as well, to have somebody that is designated and available twenty-four hours.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holmes. There's no other questions or comments? And thank you for your presentation and all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next on our agenda is the annual renewal of property casualty insurance. And I have Mr. Kaiser and Mayor Duckett. Oh, okay, and then Cynthia. Okay, that worked.
That's time I get this down to my level. Chairman, President, and Commissioners, thank you for listening to us today. Ours is not quite at the excitement level of the previous two presentations, but it is an important thing. One of the major tenets of risk management is risk transfer, which has to do with insurance. And so we do our best to get the very best we can to, to help to mitigate any major disasters that might befall us that we can't do anything about. And our representing today to tell you about their recommendations for this year are the representatives from Kaiser Millennium, which is Bob Kaiser and Nate Duckett.
Welcome, Mayor, and Mr. Kaiser.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner. Thank you for having us here this evening. On behalf of Mr. Kaiser and certainly Kaiser Millennium Levitt, we are honored to continue to serve as the county's local broker, which I think is an important component for providing your insurance and risk management services. It's meaningful, certainly to us as supporters of San Juan County and as taxpayers, that we continue to provide that service here locally. So thank you again for, for giving us a renewed contract here over the last year. This year's renewal that we bring to you today kind of represents the activities of San Juan County. We look at risk management and the cost for risk management, the risk transfer service that's involved from taking what's, what is yours and your activities and your employees and law enforcement and our adult detention center, juvenile detention center, a lot of facilities, a lot of people doing a lot of things. We want to make sure that we've got a company in place, ready to provide that risk transfer in providing you with, with opportunities if something were to happen. Those worst-case scenarios, don't, don't take a bad day and turn it into a really bad, bad day, so to speak. So we have a long-term relationship, as San Juan County knows, with Travelers Insurance. I provided you a summary of information that hopefully was in your packets there and kind of explaining the situation that we're facing right now broadly as a public entity in and of itself. That marketplace for public entities is continuing to shrink, especially in states like New Mexico, Colorado, California, Washington, where you've seen certainly state legislators pass laws that put more and more public service employees and the entities they work for at risk. We're very familiar with HB four, we're familiar with the polio-qualified immunity, and certainly the risk transfer markets are aware and are concerned. And so what we're seeing here, certainly at least the states that I mentioned, is a reduction in the number of carriers who are willing to write public entities in and of, in and of themselves. My history here as a representative for Mr. Kaiser on this account has proven year after year that really there's only one company that's been willing to quote it, and that's been Travelers. We have provided last two years' information from the New Mexico Association of Counties. Through our conversations with staff, have determined that because New Mac continues to write on a claims made form as opposed to an occurrence made form, that it really was not in our best interest to make any type of move over to, to their policies. So going into this year's renewal and discussion, since Travelers continues to provide, and I put this in our summary, kind of industry-leading best rates when it comes to public entities, which is one of the reasons why we have not been able to find other carriers willing to compete. We found it important to really focus on that, continue to pressure them to provide us with what I know Mr. Kaiser would agree with. You all are a fantastic risk for travelers. You're profitable to them. And through our conversations with their underwriter, it's critical you know how important they believe this account to be and why they are providing such, such great rates. When we talk about rates per dollar amount for property, rates per dollar amount of equipment, rates for law enforcement, those, those types of things, it's because they believe in this account and they want to continue to keep it to the best of their ability. One beacon, who was a insurance carrier that we've had here eight, nine years ago, they actually just stepped out of the public entity market. They're no longer writing public entities in the state of New Mexico. So just wanted to kind of provide that history to give you an idea of, of where we're at. Moving into the twenty twenty-two renewal in and of itself, if we look back a few years at what our total premiums were, and we don't want to be premium-driven per se, we want to make sure that we're getting the best coverage at deductibles that we can afford and making sure that we're, we're taken care of on all levels. What, what we see is represented in the premiums this year is the increased activities of the county. We have increased budgets, there's going to be more projects, there's going to be more exposure out there. Law enforcement liability, which we saw a decrease in last year, now that we're coming out of the pandemic and different things are taking shape, those, those exposures have increased. There are certainly claims being made or filed that, you know, throughout the year, majority of those claims reside in the law enforcement liability component, which is obviously to be expected. Counties carry a large load of that responsibility because they house the detention centers and the sheriff's offices and all those components that go into, to law enforcement. So when we look at this year's premiums versus last year's premiums, keep in mind that we are seeing the uptick again in county activities and budgets and employees and things that we're doing, which addresses a majority of what you're going to see on the traveler's side of it. The traveler's policies are very broad. I mean, they're covering property, they're covering your in-lane marine, your equipment, your general liability, law enforcement liability, public entity management liability, your employment-related practices liability, auto liability. I mean, these are kind of all of our base components. Where outside of travelers, it's in the excess liability markets where we have seen the largest increases to you and certainly not just in the public entity industry, but across all entities. The reason is, is that we are seeing much larger lawsuits that are being awarded, payouts that are being awarded. They call them the nuclear judgments that are happening, you know, across states, across this nation. New Mexico with HB four and other type legislation has certainly put the counties and the cities and the crosshairs of paying these exorbitant payouts for any misdeeds or misconducts of employees that are, are with us. That liability market continues to get harder. If we look at just where we've been since twenty twenty, in twenty twenty, we paid eighty-four thousand, two hundred and one dollars for a nine million dollar excess liability policy that was covered by travelers at that time. In twenty twenty-one, travelers said, we're only going to cover five million of that. We had to go to market to try and cover the other four million. That added another ninety-one thousand dollars on top of our premium. This year, that ninety-one thousand dollars for that five million is a hundred and eleven thousand dollars for that, excuse me, four million. So we're seeing those big upticks in the market and they're coming directly from what's happening in our courts, which obviously, you know, challenges us here to make sure that we're, our cost of business goes up as we see those things happen. Any questions thus far?
Want to have any questions or comments?
So in this summary, I just, I provided a little breakdown that just speaks about kind of the main areas that we're seeing within the traveler's policies outside of excess liability that's, looking at the different rates and how they, they compare to prior years. Of note, the other lines that are covered, for example, property, in-lane marine employee benefits, EPLI auto liability, those were about a three-point eight percent increase overall. If it exists within the law enforcement liability components. And then the, the other story here deals with cyber. And the cyber markets are also once, once a very robust place where everybody was offering some sort of cyber coverage. They are walking away from offering that line because of the ransomware attacks that we're seeing happen all across the United States, the breaches of cyber, cybersecurity systems and, and every different marketplace has impacted these carriers to the point where they, they are no longer able, financially able to pay out what's being required of them, so they're walking away altogether. Last week, when we came and spoke to, to administration about where we were in this renewal process, we had twenty-three declines to provide cyber liability to San Juan County. The, the feeling is, is that government agencies are, are a direct target of these cyber criminals. The payouts are, have increased, they've nearly doubled from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one in the public entity realm. The average right now, according to IBM Cybersecurity Report, is about one point nine three million is the average payout when we speak about a public entity that's been breached. The prior year was about one point oh six. So it's gone up dramatically. Hence, the markets responded, carriers have walked away. This year, we've been provided a two million dollar, or two million dollar coverage quote, whereas last year, we were able to secure ten million. The price for that two million is sixty-eight thousand. We used to be able to cover all of that for under sixty-eight thousand and had five million dollar limit. So it's an interesting time here when we talk about hardening markets, and I'll, I'll kind of let Mr. Kaiser can speak on that. But know that from the part that we play here with you as our partner, our due diligence is to make sure that we are doing all we can to bring the market to play so that we can provide you with the best coverage and the best value. When he talks about the, excuse me, thank you. When you talk about the hardening market, the insurance industry really hasn't seen a hard market like we're seeing now since like the late nineties. And really what's driving it is exactly what Nate said, is we're seeing nuclear judgments. We're seeing emerging risks that we never thought would happen. I mean, we're seeing cyber claims that even three years ago, we wouldn't expect. And we renewed, or we, we write Sunrate Casino. And they've seen the exorbitant increase also, and Brad's only is welcome to share that. He didn't, he was, he understood it completely because two weeks before, we talked about his cyber, Sunland Park was ransomware for ten days. So they were shut down for ten days, no, no income. And the amount that they had to pay is undisclosed, but everybody, all of these criminals right now understand it's, the smaller accounts are even being hit. And when they go in and ask for their ransom, they know exactly what they can pay. If it's a small car dealership, it's forty grand. If it's the pipeline company we saw on TV, it's four million. They could afford to pay that whether they had the ransomware or the coverage or not. But it's just not what they're doing, it's, it's the magnitude and the amount of claims that we're seeing. And so when you put San Juan County in perspective, and we talked about with staff, the property rates we have on San Juan County are six cents, basically six cents per hundred. So to put that in perspective, for every hundred thousand dollars of property we insure, sixty-two dollars. For every million dollars, it's six hundred and twenty dollars. So kind of, I always said, should I have my homeowners was that good? And then when you look into the auto, and Nate, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're under three hundred dollars. Yeah, auto liability were two hundred and thirty-five dollars per vehicle. Per vehicle. Thinking the house physical damage number is two hundred and ninety dollars per vehicle, and that's an annual amount. We've got six hundred plus vehicles. I think the thing that concerns me the most is I don't know, I don't know where the end's going to come. The private sector is being hit horribly. And so last week, I had a client, we had, we had a company settle a three-point-six million dollar claim before they even went to court. Last year, we had a client who we thought it was about, could be about a million dollar claim in a mock trials. They did two mock trials in Santa Fe and both mock trials gave them over thirteen million. So of course, they go out and settle that one. Unless we see some type of tort reform for the private sector, I don't think it's going to change. I do think the public sector is going to be outside of, outside of the legislature and some of the bills that we saw come through, I do think it's extremely stable. What we're seeing in the private sector right now on umbrellas are a hundred percent increases for half the coverage. Cyber liability, we're seeing five to six times for the same coverage. So the private sector, until we can get some type of tort reform, they're going to keep getting hit. The public sector, where you all play.
The public sector where you all play, you know, we're seeing single digit increases and kind of mid-single. So travelers has done an exceptional job. And I would say that San Juan County has done travelers an exceptional job. So there's one thing that I I do believe in, and that's what I call carrier equity. And that's what you guys have with travelers. I mean, you guys have a lot of equity with them and they have a lot and they live up to that. So I'm really proud of them and I'm super proud of San Juan County and what you guys have done over the, gosh, we've been with them over 20 years except for one year. And it's been a great partnership. So you do have a lot of equity and capital built up with travelers. So that's where it comes.
Thank you. You have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair. You know, a person can get really angry and ram their truck through the windows there or somebody workplace violence where they come in here armed and we all get slaughtered or something.
That's a scary picture. Should I be worried right now?
Where is the cover? I'm just curious.
Your liability protects in those situations. You know, obviously you're going to have coverage for the building that may have been damaged. But if anybody is obviously injured in a situation like that, I mean, your your liability, if there's a judge were to deem you at fault for any piece of that, I mean, that's where those come from. Certainly, that like those would be worst case scenarios where we want to make sure we have that protection in place. I do want to reiterate something that Mr. Kaiser said, and that that is the fact that your staff does an amazing job. I put this in the summary. The partnership and working with with our staff has been tremendous. They've been extremely diligent and in a very challenging renewal period, which was one of those things. I blame it on COVID. That just makes it easy for me. But but I really appreciate their diligence and how quickly they respond to those questions that we pose to them.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, if I may, I want to echo what Mr. Duckett mentioned regarding our staff. I want to thank them, Mr. Duckett and Mr. Kaiser for their work on this renewal as well as Ms. Singleton and Ms. Harris. And the rest of our staff had to respond to numerous questionnaires, which was unusual that we we've not seen the, you know, the voluminous.
It's much more of a mess this year. And we're seeing that across across all sectors. Their insurance companies were really looking harder at at the risks. And this year was certainly one of those for us.
Yeah, but it it was worth the effort. I feel like we've got the right level of coverage. Yes, we a couple of areas are have a little less coverage, especially in the cyber area. You know, having $2 million right now, and I know we're trying to pursue some excess. But but if we end up at 2 million, knowing that, you know, some of the recent public entities, what they're seeing is the 1.8, 1.9 million dollar range in terms of potential claims and exposure. We feel really good, given the policies and procedures and and protocols that we put in place relative to network security here in the county. And we've, and I kudos to, and I see Mr. Lund, I, well, now I can see him. The IS team, they work really hard to keep the county protected. And so we feel like in addition to the multiple number of systems that we've been able to move on to the cloud and the hosted environment, that if we we were to suffer a major attack and, you know, fellow county in Bernal Leo recently went through this where they were down for for over three weeks, dead in the water. That we could still operate the majority of the county because of the job that's been done to date and getting these systems in a hosted environment where, you know, we may be infiltrated here, but we're able, as long as, you know, we're able to gain access to the internet, we can keep things up and running. So I I think we'll we'll be okay. Well, we'd like to have the extra cushion. That's always.
We want the extra cushion.
That's always nice to have, but but we've evaluated and feel that we'll we'll make it through this year. And of course, you know, continue to strengthen all the things that we're doing countywide, but specifically related to cybersecurity. Just wanted to assure assure you of of the fact that we've evaluated that risk and that we feel comfortable moving forward.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so this is the action item. Thank you for your presentation. We need approval of the annual renewal. Have a motion.
I'll second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, then we'll move on to the next thing on our agenda. And is this where Mr. Cox or is?
No, we have one more. Michelle, one number four.
Okay, I gotta go back to my. Okay, so you're you're presenting on the cannabis one. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Michelle Truby-Tillen. I'm the Community Development Director. I'll read to you the staff summary. This is a variance for John Armenta. Submitted a variance petition application to the Community Development Department on January 20th of 2022. Mr. Armenta is seeking a variance from section three of the ordinance of ordinance number 120. That'd be the 300 foot buffer minimum separation distance from residence requirement. The applicant owns the residence and property located at 57 Road 3145 Aztec and wishes to start an indoor cannabis cultivation production facility on the property. The applicant plans to construct a metal building approximately 40 by 80 or 3,200 square foot on the property for growing up to 200 plants. The entire property would be surrounded by an opaque privacy security fence. Applicant indicated that they would utilize a filtered exhaust system to reduce odor of cannabis plants being grown on the property. There are seven residents within the 300 feet of the property's security fence, proposed fence. A public hearing was held before hearing Officer Decless Echols on February 23rd, 2022. Notice of the hearing was mailed to residents within 300 feet of the proposed site and all adjoining properties and was published on the county's website. No written comments were received prior to the hearing. The resident of 11 Road 3320, one of the seven residences within the 300 foot variance or 300 foot of measurement, appeared at the hearing to express concern and ask questions regarding the variance. After hearing from the applicant, the individual indicated he was no longer opposed to the variance. Hearing Officer Echols submitted written findings and conclusions and recommends the request for variance be granted for a period of 10 years as requested by the applicant for an indoor growth facility only and subject to installation and use of filtered exhaust system.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, do I have any questions or comments for Mr. Truby-Tillen? Okay, this is an action item?
The applicant is also in the audience if you have questions.
Thank you. All right. So.
Sure, so they do plan on doing a filtration system?
It's on there. Yeah, I thought it's on there.
Yeah. So this point, since it's action item, do I have a motion to approve?
I'd move to approve the implication for variance.
I'll second that.
Have a first and a second? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, motion carries. All right, thank you. Next on the agenda, it looks like I have Lisa Gomez. Is that correct?
Good evening.
Good evening. Chair, members of the commission. You have before you a consideration of approval of the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Toll Agreement for Behavioral Health Services, Joint Intervention Program or JIP, and sobering program. As you may recall, the program is a multi-agent agency partnership between the county, San Juan Regional, City of Farmington, and PMS to provide substance use treatment services and emergency housing to the street inebriate and chronically homeless population in the community. Included in that, one of the services provided for in this agreement is operation of an emergency shelter for sober individuals during the coldest season of the year, which the City of Farmington actually provides the funds to operate from November 1st to March 31st. So there is a need identified, not only from clients we received in the Mental Wellness Resource Center, but also first responders and other agencies and providers that say, you know, it takes a while to get into path. There's no place to take somebody if if they need to stay somewhere, you know, a safe place to stay. So what does the First Amendment do? Essentially extends the winter shelter, AKA expansion shelter, to year round. So the agreement will be the city will still provide five months of funding. The county will fund five months and PMS will provide two months. And we expect that we earmarked the BHIZ grant funds to cover those five months for so for the current fiscal year, it'll be three months. But next fiscal year, we'll budget for a full five months. Thereafter, cover it some way. So as long as we have the biz funds, we'll cover it there, possibly H cap if there are no other resources. So as you know, H cap is a dedicated tax increment for healthcare assistance program out of which we cover the regular contract for the JIP and sobering program. And Sue Hodgman is here, the Behavioral Health Director, if you have questions. And I don't know if you've met her yet, but we have the new region director too, Jill Adair from PMS. So if she wants to say hello or a couple of comments.
Welcome.
Hi, Terry, nice to see you. Without a mask. Without a mask, right. So I'm Jill Adair, and I am the new region director for Presbyterian Medical Services. So just a quick little, I guess, background of myself is that I've been in San Juan County for about 29 years and I've been employed with Presbyterian Medical Services for almost 20 of those years. And so I've had the pleasure of being able to provide administration to three of our five programs that we oversee, which is our Roundtree Children's Developmental Services Program, our SHIELD, which is the Adults with Disabilities Program, and also our Children's Services, which includes our Head Starts. Throughout both, all the county, we have seven different locations. So just recently in January, I have accepted this position as the region director. So I wanted to take in the opportunity to thank you all for your partnership, you know, and everything that you have done with with our TOTAP program and JIP and Sobering Center. So we really couldn't couldn't do what what we do today without your support. Lisa, for up here to present, but I did want to make sure that I came up and introduced myself to you all.
Thank you for introducing yourself and welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Your talents will be well used.
All serious things aside, I always wondered who put up with Rod on a consistent basis. I totally fumbled that.
That's okay. That's all right. That's all right. It'll be all right. I'll tell Carol, it's okay.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Gomez?
Yes, Madam Chair, I request approval and I'm stand for any questions you might have.
Okay, do you have any questions or comments for Ms. Gomez? Okay, if none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second thought.
Okay. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, motion carries. Thank you. And one more thing is the National Association of of Mental Illness. We received information on that. And so what I'd like is maybe at a future date, if you can give us more information on that, Sue, and why it's important, because that's a big deal.
Yeah, we can invite the representatives of the NAMI affiliate here for the next meeting or whenever you'd like.
Okay, because that means a lot for San Juan County. It's been long and coming.
Long time coming, yeah.
I know that for maybe plus years, so thank you.
Well, we, San Juan County has an official affiliate with the National Alliance of Mental Illness, which means locally people can join the affiliate. They can access on, right now it's just all online because of COVID. They have the peer-to-peer support groups. They have the family-to-family support groups. They also have a professional education group or informational setting and they they hold regular events, especially during May for National Mental Health or Mental Wellness Month and things like that. So this is, there's over 600 affiliates in the United States and now San Juan County has their own.
That's great. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, next we have Jim Cox. Jim, I must say you've been doing an excellent job. I would be very nervous over there.
I know my first question is to find out, not having to mute and unmute, but.
We need one of those up here.
Well, Madam Chair, Commissioners, good evening. I am here to request a couple of items. One, that you all would rescind the current temporary remote work and leave policy and procedure for COVID-19 and then adopt a new remote work policy and agreement. So a little bit of background behind that. So on March 23rd, 2020, the commission had adopted this temporary leave policy. And really what what that was is is our emergency measure to do everything we can to try to help prevent the spread of COVID. And and at the time, social distancing was, you know, the public health practice of preventing that. And so our, to mimic what Mr. Sharca said, that our S, our information systems department has done leaps and bounds in terms of our technology. And they they had made certain things that we were capable of doing that other governments were. So we were really able to turn on that switch to do remote work. And so at that time, you all had approved this this temporary policy. And we had roughly 50 users supposed to immediately be able to do remote work. That has been in place from from that time to today. Roughly today, there's about 30 users still working remotely. But through the course of the year, May 25th, 2021, the commission had adopted five different information systems, operational policies and procedures. And what those were meant to do is to try to help reduce the county's exposure to and liability from cyber tax, you know. Can I come at a better time when we're talking about insurance renewals and just just the mass quantity of cyber tax we have out there? And so last year, part of the the renewal of our insurance actually required that we implement I guess the industry would call multi-factor authentication. And we did so. That was required to really just maintain the coverage that we had. But we need something to officially document that policy that that we are abiding by to to meet the requirements. So the other component, I guess, of the temporary policy was was that it was to be in effect the longer of the expiration of the public health emergency or if it was suspended by the county manager. As you all know, the public health emergency has not yet expired. And so it is still in effect and that's why we're requesting that you rescind this policy. But because it's already been almost two years since the time we've implemented this, we figured we really need to get a policy in place that would actually be our our perpetual policy, a policy that would incorporate all of the necessary items to ensure proper security of our infrastructure, namely the requirement of establishing VPN connections when you're working from home as well as the the MFA, the multi-factor authentication. So what we did is is we we really started with this temporary policy because it's it's really worked well for the county. And with that, we did add a few things because it's a permanent policy. We had wanted to ensure that that we know who is actually eligible to actually be on this remote work policy. And so each job description within the county would now actually identify if it's a remote work eligible position or not. So those that are deemed eligible would would be able to follow this. Now, doesn't mean that that they just automatically get to follow this. This is something that is solely for the benefit of the the county. This is something that is solely for the benefit of the county. And with that, you know, we have to make sure they're eligible. The department head or elected official has to approve that they're on a remote work situation. If it's greater than 30 days, the county manager would also have to approve. Within the policy, we do talk about maintaining safe office spaces, ergonomic seating situations, you know, monitors and whatnot, and so, as well as OSHA. We do reference OSHA in there. And so the policy itself also requires that a remote work period can't exceed 180 days without re-going through the process and signing of the remote work agreement. Really what that does is reminds everybody of all of the specific elements, whether it be the cybersecurity, whether it be, you know, the risk management piece, as well as just say, hey, how is this remote work scenario working? It can be rescinded at any time by the department head or elected official. So again, it's solely for the benefit of the county. I can go into more detail if you like or stand for any questions. But at this point, I do also have Ms. Chapman, Mr. Lund, and Assessor Voita here, just to, if you would like, they can kind of discuss the benefits that they've actually seen through the use of the remote work.
Is Sheriff Tanner going to qualify for remote?
That's, no.
No? Sorry.
My apologies.
I tried. I tried.
And actually, you know, honestly, that's a great question. When you look at one of the components, when you think, okay, remote work is away from county infrastructure, so county building, well, the mobile data terminals actually qualify as county infrastructure. So any sheriff deputy, any fire personnel that are working on MDTs are actually not remote working. So that's actually another great component, and so they're exempted from the policy. But stand for any other questions and request that you would rescind the temporary policy and adopt the, this new revised San Juan County Remote Work Policy, as well as the remote work agreement. One additional thing, I apologize, one of the big significant changes is also that we're requiring use of county laptops, and that's just to maintain that security. The temporary just allowed us to connect through VPN network to personal computers, but really to maintain that security to the best level that we can. We were able to secure funding using the ARPA dollars to order what we call the thin client laptops. So they're look and feel like a laptop, they connect to the internet, and it connects directly to our infrastructure. My apologies, I did not add that.
Thank you. All right. So does this need to be, to read that we need to rescind the previous and then approve all in the same thing?
Madam Chairman, yes, it does.
Madam Chair, I'd move that we rescind the current remote work policy and adopt the proposed policy.
Okay. Second. You have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. Right, so next we have, I believe, do we have online? Okay.
Mr. Kelton should be online, I believe.
Mr. Kelton?
Madam Chair, I am online.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And Madam Chair, I was going to give a brief introduction and then hand it off.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Last year, the commission approved the issuance and sale of industrial revenue bonds to allow Photosol to finance construction of a solar power project to replace power loss when the San Juan Generating Station is abandoned. Now, Photosol would like to amend the lease, sublease, and deeds of sale associated with those IRBs to realign certain properties, and Mr. Kelton can describe that in more detail if you'd like. So with us today to describe this request in greater detail is Peter Kelton, our bond attorney. Or not our bond attorney, actually, the bond attorney for Photosol, I believe. Well, actually, they pay for you, but you're our bond attorney.
Correct. I figured it out, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and also Joe, that's a great overview. As you likely recall, back in 2021, and several ordinances were adopted, ordinances 114, 115, and 116, approving of three IRB transactions for three separate project companies to engage in certain activities related to renewable energy, generation, transmission, so on and so forth. As part of those IRBs, they did end up closing June of 2021 to help close before, the main impetus of closing at that time was trying to have those IRBs close prior to certain legislation taking effect and modifying the terms of those IRBs. Today, before you, is a resolution which would approve of amendments to the lease agreement, sublease agreement, and amend and restate the bills of sale associated with the IRBs. And the overall gist of what the developer is hoping to accomplish is just realigning the boundaries as they relate amongst the projects. No new property will be coming into the three IRBs as a whole. Really, it's just sort of a moving the boundaries as they relate amongst the projects themselves. And none of the financials are changing for these IRB projects as well. Since all this has already been approved in terms of the real estate that is subject to the IRBs, our thinking is that a resolution seems appropriate under the circumstances. And also here with me today is counsel for the development companies, San Juan Solar, San Juan Solar One LLC, San Juan Solar Project LLC, and SJS Storage LLC. And they're also available to answer any questions that you may have regarding what's before you today. And with that, I'm happy to stand for any questions. And actually, I do have Matt Kim Miller and I believe Adrian, sorry, misplaced her last name, Adrian Bell from the Holland &amp; Hart Law Firm, who are here today to also provide some updates with respect to the project. And with that, I'm happy to turn it over to them to give a brief talk.
This is Adrian Bell. As Peter mentioned, I'm with Holland &amp; Hart and here on behalf of the project companies. Again, the request is simply to approve an amendment to the various lease and other documents relating to the IRBs, simply to accommodate the updated design and layout for the projects. There are no other changes that are needed in connection with that, but it was just how the pieces of the project puzzles fit together at the end of the day after we went through the IRB process initially. But we're happy to answer any questions you may have. I did also want to let you all know, an update in terms of the project development process. There was an interest transfer where Photosol has sold its membership interest in the project company to DESRI. So the project company remains the same, the projects remain the same, the bond purchasers all remain the same. The transfer just happened yesterday, that's why we're still catching up after the closing on getting the news out. So because of our pre-confidentiality, or pre-closing confidentiality obligations, we weren't in a position to provide any advance notice of this, but we did want to make the commissioners aware of the transfer. As you should know also that DESRI is an experienced renewable energy developer, and they've worked on other projects in New Mexico, and we're happy to provide additional information about DESRI or facilitate an introductory call with the commissioners or staff. Just let us know.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Mr. Miller, is that who you said?
That's correct. And Madam Chair, members of the commission, I did have just a follow-up question or two for Ms. Bell. So my understanding is that basically an equity transfer had occurred with respect to the three project companies. And as a result, it's your position and interpretation of the bond documents that because it was an equity transfer and not a full-on assignment to new project companies, that the assignment provisions of the IRB documents wouldn't be triggered or implicated. And again, these are all the same project companies, just under sort of new control from a sort of LLC membership unit perspective.
That's correct. The projects remain the developers, it's just the ownership interests of those projects that has changed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have any other questions, Mr. Kelton?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, no, that's the last of my questions. Thank you.
Okay. And then Mr. Miller, is that who I have also on the line? Mr. Miller, can you hear us? His hand is up.
He may be having difficulties, but we coordinate on this, so I don't think there's anything more on our side that we even are.
Yes, I think I finally answered that unmute button, so thank you all. But yes, I did, I didn't even add, but happy to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you. All right. Commissioners, are there any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, if I could ask a question of Ms. Bell, this is Mike Stark, county manager. Staff would be interested in meeting with the new equity owner of the three projects. So if you could please get them in contact with us, we would appreciate it. For clarification purposes, though, who would be developing the project now? Is it still Photosol? Or will there actually be the active project management and development will be by this new company? Maybe you could spell that for us so we make sure we get the.
Sure, sure, sure.
Correct spelling of DESRI.
So their acronym is DESRI, D-E-S-R-I, which stands for DE Shaw Renewable Investments. Sorry, there's a bit of an echo. And we are, so let me step back. They have acquired the ownership, Photosol's interest in the projects, so they are stepping into the shoes of Photosol as the developer going forward, and they will bring the projects, they will start construction and bring them online and take the projects over from this point going forward. And we're happy to facilitate an introduction and a meeting, and we can reach out to you and your staff by email offline and get that scheduled.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, and we certainly would look forward to such a meeting, so thanks for coordinating.
Of course.
Is there anything else?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the resolution number 212252.
Have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we, Ms. Truby Tillan, is that correct for this one? Or is this?
Madam Chair, this is the one where Mr. Sawyer is going to.
Okay, I didn't write it down.
That's fine. Madam Chair, Commissioners, today we're asking you to approve publishing a notice to amend the cannabis regulation ordinance. Since the ordinance was approved last year, we've had, we've noticed some areas that need to be clarified or adjusted, such as, number one, the measurement definition, to clarify the 300-foot separation requirement does not apply to the residence of a cannabis establishment owner if it's on an adjacent parcel, that came up. Number two, to clarify that if there's not a security fence, which we assume there would be, we thought that was going to be state regulation, but if there's not a security fence, the measurement shall be from the nearest point of any structure containing cannabis or the nearest point of any security fence that does exist, whichever is nearer. Number three, the fees have been moved out of the ordinance so that they can be changed without you needing to amend the ordinance every time you adjust the fees. Number four, we've removed the request on the application for some unnecessary personal information like social security numbers and date of birth. Number five, instead, we initially called it a temporary permit, but it's actually a letter of approval will be issued initially, and then the permit will be issued upon completion of the fire and building inspections. So we're just clarifying what that really is. And then number six, any business operating in violation of the ordinance will be reported to the State Cannabis Control Division. And so we're only asking you to approve publishing the notice of intent to adopt, to amend the cannabis ordinance at this time. And if you approve that, it will be placed on the April 5th agenda for adoption.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, motion carries, thank you. Okay, next, Mr. Stark.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This item is to talk about rescheduling of a few meetings in May, July, and August, and we're going to add June to that as well, with the permission of our attorney that we can do that, to talk about canvassing of an election, so.
Madam Chairman, yes, yes, since it also, since the topic is commission meeting schedule for those months, I think it's okay that you add another month.
So thank you, Mr. Sawyer. So it's budget time. I know Ms. Martin feels like it just ended, here we are starting again, but, so that's the purpose of this item, is to look at our meeting schedules and try to find some time that works for a workshop, and then as well as moving some meetings to accommodate submission of the interim budget to DFA the end of May, and the final budget the end of July. So starting with May, staff would suggest that similar to last year, we hosted a dedicated four-hour workshop to cover the budget. Obviously, it's a new process for a couple of you last year, and I think it was very helpful and informative, and we would suggest a similar kind of dedicated day for that. And so our suggestion, and of course, these are just recommendations, and look for your direction, is to have a dedicated workshop on May 10th, starting at 11:00 a.m. So if that works for you all, that's what we would propose, is kind of lock out 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And then to accommodate a delivery of the, of the, you know, interim budget that's discussed and get it worked up and sent over to DFA, Department of Finance and Administration at the state level, we would suggest moving the second meeting in May, the regularly scheduled meeting, from the 17th to the 24th, at the same time at 4:00 p.m. And then to accommodate the final budget, we would recommend moving the second meeting in July from July 19th to the 26th, so still a Tuesday meeting, and still at 4:00 o'clock would be our recommendation. And then because of this proximity to the August, first meeting in August, we would suggest canceling, which we've done in years past, the first meeting in August, so that would mean we'd only have one meeting during the month of August, and that seems to have worked well in the past. So then going back to June, I appreciate the county clerk making me aware of the fact that we need to look at moving the first meeting in June to accommodate the canvassing of the election, which has to be done no sooner than six days after the primary, and no later. to be done no sooner than six days after the primary and no later than 10 days. That does place such a meeting during the New Mexico County Summer Conference potentially, if we were to maintain what we've historically done, which is move that meeting to the Tuesday after the primary, which this would be June 7th, we would suggest moving it to June 14th. Now, if you would like to move it to that Monday, the 13th, the county clerk indicated she could probably accommodate that, but we would certainly leave that up to you all to give us direction on all those items. So lots to consider. If you need a calendar, I've got one here on my computer. If you've got one on your phone, good, okay. Madam Chair, you mentioned maybe having a conflict with that budget workshop.
Right. And I was also looking, the New Mexico Counties has a conference in Bernalillo, June 13.
Correct.
17. So I'm not familiar with that conference, the days that are needed for me to be there.
So, as our board member, more than likely, you will have a meeting on the 14th. And I think that meeting normally occurs in the afternoon from, say, 1ish to 4ish.
Okay.
So that's where if you would like us to consider the 13th, I don't know what, Ms. Shelby, speak to that, is whether or not that would work for her office.
Madam Chair and members of the Commission, historically, we're ready to canvas the Thursday after the election, but ever since HB 407 was approved, that that's what changed it from the not before six days and no later than 10 days. So my office will be ready on the 13th, Monday, the 13th, if that accommodates you better.
Okay. So what about the other commissioners for June 13th on a Monday instead of on the 14th? Is that okay with you?
I think June 14th is fine.
Is that okay?
The 14th.
The 13th.
Or 13th.
The 13th. Is that okay? Okay, John?
I say we do it on the 17th.
Friday, the 17th.
And Madam Chair and members of the Commission.
Would that put it past the 10 days?
No, I think the 10th day is that.
Then the week after that.
Unfortunately, there's a lot of clerks that will not be able to attend the New Mexico Counties because of the way that the dates fell. And so I know they asked for a reconsideration of the date. It's not going to happen. It's too late. But hopefully, going forward, they will, you know, take that into, they'll keep that in mind so that the county clerks can attend the New Mexico Association of County meetings.
Would the 13th help with maybe sending more clerks down?
Well, it'll be for each commission, for each of the counties to decide. But I mean, as far as for us, yes, we would be able to attend, you know, even if it was possibly that Tuesday, depending on what's on the, we haven't seen the agenda yet. So, whatever works best for you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, what time would you like to have that meeting on the 13th? 4:00 normal scheduled, normal time, or?
Okay, this is for the, for canvassing.
Correct. So this would be moving the June 7th meeting to the 13th.
Okay.
And so you certainly could adjust the time if you'd like, or keep it at our normal, regular scheduled time, whichever works for you.
What's the consensus?
I'm fighting for regular time.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so.
It's 4:01. I was here three minutes early.
3:57 this is the other.
You go to 3:57.
Okay, so go to June 13th at 4:00 p.m.
Okay.
Okay, so on the 10th, see, it was May, let me go back, May 10th.
Budget, interim budget workshop.
Okay, and that's from?
We were suggesting 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., but once again, we're here to accommodate the schedule of the commission, so.
I have a conflict. So, I mean, if it's possible, move it to the 9th, but that's a conflict for somebody else. When do we need to do this by?
Well, we need to submit an interim budget to the Department of Finance by the end of May. So we could certainly look at that Wednesday. Assuming that work for, does that work better for your schedule, Madam Chair?
That, that would be fine with me. We'd start at 11. I have something earlier in that morning.
We could start whatever time you'd like.
Okay, so would?
So the 11th is would be on the table here. June.
June.
Tell you.
Does that have a graduation in?
That you're going to before.
The 12th.
It's pretty close to that time.
It's the 18th. 18th and 20th. So it's the following week.
It's the following week. Okay. So we can look at the 11th at 11:00, Wednesday 11?
That'd be all right.
Mm-hmm.
That works for everybody?
Yes.
Okay. And then, moving the May 17th meeting to May 24th, the following Tuesday, does that? It's calendar? We're proposing 4:00 again.
They just got busy.
Yes.
17th to the 24th.
Says that quick.
That's fine for me.
Okay.
17th to the 24th. The second meeting in July from the 19th to the 26th, July 19th to the 26th. That works for me, except for other people.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then eliminate the meeting August 2nd. Okay, and that would just leave the one on the 16th.
Correct.
Okay, so, all right. So if that works for everybody.
Madam Chair, I'd move to modify, amend, change the schedule, add, as discussed. Is that okay?
Yes, we, I think we got it all down, so.
As discussed, to buy all the commissions.
Second lap. We have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Host, okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. So at this time, then, do we need to do public comments before we go into executive session?
We do. We do need to do that.
So at this time, we'll go to public, well, we also need to do your report, right? I'm skipping ahead too fast.
Yeah, Madam Chair, and I just have one quick item for you tonight, given length of the meeting. But we did receive word that the congressionally-directed spending projects, and you may recall, we submitted on one for the Pinon Hills project, the extension project for acquisition of Right Away, the amount of 1.25 million. Those projects did get approved by the House and Senate and was signed off by President Biden via the continuing resolution. So that project has been funded. Now, as I reported to you last meeting, great news from the state of New Mexico, who's going to, you know, take that project on and make it happen in full, upwards of $40 million, and it may be more than that by the time the project's completed. We did reach out to Senator Heinrich's office and made them aware of the fact that that, that's now the direction the state's moving with that project. And, and per the request of the state, it asked that the congressionally-directed funding requests that we're going to receive be directed and allocated to the state of New Mexico, help offset their costs of the project, since they're going to be ultimately now the fiscal agent and, and providing the project management on that, on that project. So just wanted to make you aware of that, because that list will be distributed today. I know a press release was just issued before our meeting. So when you see that amount, we were successful, which is really good news, and appreciate all the hard work that Mr. Perrell put into that. And of course, you all approved that request, and we, a lot of uncertainty related to that, and sure enough, it finally made it to the finish line, and we got funded. So if we did receive word today, too, they're already accepting requests for next year. And so we'll be sure to evaluate the opportunities there and try to find a project that, that works, because you know, there's some parameters regarding projects that are, that are, you know, acceptable, and bring something to you for approval on the next round of funding. So. Whenever that money goes into the pot of New Mexico money, does it push New Mexico money out somewhere else, or do they leave it in there for any overages or miscalculations? Yeah, Madam Chair and Commissioner Beckstead, I, my understanding, and we brought that up with Secretary Sandoval, is it would just be added to the pot of funding. It would be helpful in light of some of the construction inflation that's being seen nationwide, well, globally, really, that that would be helpful for the state to kind of offset some of their costs on the 40 million plus dollars that are going to be associated with. So good, great question. That, that's our understanding of how it's going to work.
And now we have reports from elected officials and department heads. And we'll go on down to comments and input from the general public. This is limited to subjects of the commission, has not previously discussed, or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this time at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. Do we have any comments or anything that we need read into the record?
Madam Chair, we do have two comments that we received this afternoon relative to the TICO time matter, and I'm happy to read those into the record. I know I've also got copies in front of you. So I'll do whatever your pleasure is. Would you like me to read these? Okay. All right. So the first comment is from Judy Bryson, and her comment is as follows. Here we go again. I see Holmes is presenting at your meeting. From the looks of their schedule, it's not much different from last year with music scheduled until 3:00 a.m. Only difference is fireworks on July 4th. What happened to a special events permit or something like it? Comments in the Daily Times and Herald by Mike Stark. This is kind, this is the kind of business San Juan needs because of the money it generates. As usual, it's not about the money, not the welfare of all the citizens. LMF, they were in all of your backyards. I think a solution for everyone would be quicker and happening. Enough already. We've had enough of your dragging feet. It's time to find a solution everyone can live with. And the second comment was from Gary and Ellen Hout to all the commissioners. Please do not let this be a nuisance and ruin our wildlife and peace and quiet. Last time I was there, we all thought this was going to be taken care of, as per Steve and Mike had assured all of us. I will be out of town and will not be able to make the city council meetings, so sending this note to be recorded. This is affecting our property values and taxes just keep going up like everything else. Please at least give us some peace. There are several retired people groups out here, and we came because of the peace and quiet. I know this is all about money, which we don't have, but hopefully, we still have rights to a peaceful and quiet existence. So we can all keep our sanity and be without the lawlessness or lawless. And there should absolutely be a noise ordinance for this area, so people can enjoy their highly taxed homes that are going down in value because of the crazy party grounds. We also have a number of young children out here that need rest, and they're hearing not be destroyed. Last year, 18 naked people running loose down at the river with, with not a stitch of clothing on at all. They were defecating in the river and urinating in it. Also, it's just not right. Please stop the injustice so we can live a peaceful life as it was when we bought these homes. Those are the only two comments we received.
Thank you. All right. And at this time, we will be going into closed session. Oh, that's true. Yeah, yeah, sorry. Are there any public comments at this time? If you want to come forward and please identify yourself and?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's good to see all of you. Urban Chavas, I live over in Bloomfield, but actually from the community of Nagisi, south of Bloomfield. I wanted to come before the commission to have the commissioner consider maybe sometime in, maybe upcoming meetings, an issue that we're dealing with down in, in southern San Juan County, which is land withdrawal by the Biden administration. 51,000 acres of public land is proposed, is they're proposing to withdraw from any further oil and gas exploration. So that's, that's something that we've been battling. I think back two years ago or three years ago, I know Commissioner Beckstead was in Washington helping us meet with some of the congressional people, senators and stuff. So we appreciate that. But that battle is still going ongoing at this time. In fact, ever since President Biden took office, right off the bat, he basically agreed to freezing 51,000 acres of public land. That's one thing that's really upsetting our area. As you know, southern San Juan County basically is checkerboard. It's checkered with allotment lands, Indian allotment lands, state lands, federal lands, private land, whatever you got out there. But just for them to just say, one swoop, we're going to freeze that much land, it's going to impact everybody. It's going to impact a lot of the, a lot of the families that live, live down through there. You know, we realize that we have probably a lot of money that came into the hands of families through CARES Act, some type of stimulus, and now with ARP. But you know, one thing that we're really concerned with is what happened when all that is gone, when all that is gone. When we say that, because a lot of the oil and gas wells in that area on allotment lands, this is what the families are using for their, for their needs of the families, buying food, clothing, whatever they have. So that's, that's on the, on the long run. They're going to, they're going to need that income from these, these wells. One of the things that, I guess, when we say the five-mile buffer zone, apparently, Senator Heinrich had proposed language when we were in Washington, D.C., early part of 2020. He had actually put out a 30-mile buffer zone north of Chaco Canyon. And, and we were not sure if that's from the border of the current fence they have around the park or is it from the center of the park. We're not sure how he was measuring that. We actually objected to that, and, and then, for some reason, we were back there in Washington, D.C., they made it sound like they're doing us a favor by bringing it back to 10 miles. And Navo families that live in the Chaco region basically did not agree to any buffer zone, because their position is that the park is already fenced and it's already protected. So why are you creating another buffer zone in and about, above that? So that's one thing that, that families really came out. But one of the things that, the reason we said five miles is we met with the families, and one of the companies that, that was doing some work down there with oil and gas enduring, did a study, and come to find out that the, just on the northern side of the Chaco Canyon Park, there's a stone wall, basically sandstone wall that protects the ruins. And that's why, when we met with them, they said, it's a give and take. We will give five miles, because yes, there is still allotment lands within that five miles, but there, there's no oil production within those five miles. So that's why we said we would, we can work with the five-mile buffer zone. And so, but the battle continues, because they're saying that we're still going to freeze 50, 51,000 acres of land. And that's one thing that we're, we're really wanting some help from the commissioners. Just to let you know, the Navo Nation Council passed the legislation basically supporting the five-mile buffer zone. They said we could work with it. Then President Nez, President Jonathan Nez, two days before Thanksgiving this past November, wrote a letter to President Biden saying that we, this will have devastating effect on Navo families living in the region. So it seems like all that is being, is being pushed aside. And, and the last week, over here at San Juan College, BLM was instructed by Secretary Interior, Depp Holland, to do a listening, a listening, a guessing, a listening conference. And it really was a sham, the way it was operated, it was put out. It was, they only allowed 50 people at a time. It was they only allowed 50 people at a time into some of those hearings to even make comments. They weren't even allowed to make comments. And they just always said submit your comments in writing. So so those things are really were really battling. So it just got me so mad of what what was happening to our people in the region that it's bad enough as it is, as we were talking about earlier. Oil and gas really has tried up here and development has been tried up here in San Juan County. Money is not there no more. So here we are, administration coming in saying that we're going to freeze that much land, oil and gas. So there's a lot of things I could go into detail about this. But what I want to do, Madam Chair, if I can, I'll leave this map with you. This is the latest map of the land withdrawal. And you will see, if you look at this, it's a big chunk of San Juan County, a huge chunk of San Juan County that they're looking at. So those are things that we wanted to have commissioners maybe put it on your agenda down the road as to support it. We can provide Mike with documents and resolutions that other the Navajo Nation has passed. And it's something to give you, as I guess you can say, to follow. I want you to do that. That's mainly what I'm here for. I've been at this since 1980. I can't believe it. 1980, we sued the interior at that time, did that for 16 years. That was it was only gas also. That that issue was reached a decree in 1996, but then popped up Eloise Kabel again. And I we helped Eloise Kabel on her lawsuit again against the interior also for another 16 years. So that really gives you my age. I started this when I was about 30 years old. So here I am. When Delora asked me to come out and help her again, I was like, I thought I was finished. But Delora's really been adamant about this. And I really appreciate Commissioner Beckstead for helping us with that time, even back in DC. But we're going to we're not going to give up till, you know, I guess it's over. But I think it's something that we're still going to battle for this as time being. So I'll leave this with you, Madam Chair.
If you want to give it to Mike and then he can set our agenda accordingly.
Okay. So that's what I'm here for, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Have another comment? And identify yourself, please.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my commissioner, Commissioner Gorgui Torricini Yate, Joseph Hernandez, I am from a community that is about 15 miles west of Shiprock. I'm a San Juan County resident. I'm glad to be here and I'm also I've been appointed, again, Indian Affairs, the state Indian Affairs has appointed me on the Energy Transition Act Community Advisory Committee. I am also Secretary Props, Secretary Kenny appointed me onto the recent climate change community, climate change technical advisory group that is just now started meeting for the next eight weeks, every Wednesday. I'm also a community organizer in on the Navajo Nation. I'm also a recent proudly a District 12 volunteer firefighter, you know? And in response to suggestions for projects, when I was working in District 12, it took us like up to 30 minutes in delay to respond to, you know, emergency calls when we went to San Juan Chapter, when we went to Nanahanzad, when we went to Upper Fruitland. And those communities, they need a bridge. Once this bridge is done over here, I urge you to push and give those communities a bridge, you know, into the Hogback community because the Hogback community is developing. It's amazing. And that's your money. That's money for the county right there. And we need to build a bridge into the Hogback community, into Water Flow. Secondly, I am here to support the 30 by 30 initiative. The 30 by 30 initiative will benefit San Juan County economically. It will benefit us socially and it will bring so many resources to us. And I thank you for following up on my request to hear from the benefits of the 30 by 30 because it will truly, you know, not only conserve and preserve our lands for many generations, but it will also allow for this generation, for us, to be able to enjoy our outdoors, enjoy recreation and hunting and fishing. And this 30 by 30 initiative is a step forward in that direction to ensure that, you know, you know, the cultural significance that's in San Juan County is there for many generations to come. And and I'm also speaking as a as an A Lot T, you know? I my I'm like what I call, I'm the next generation of A Lot Ts, you know, that's taking over. And and this is going to bring that, you know, awareness of the cultural sensitivity that's in our county. Because the 30 by 30 initiative, it has all tribal leaders who are standing behind it. All tribal leaders are standing behind us. So was many New Mexico voters. And so in conclusion, the 30 by 30 initiative is going to be our ammunition, our our tool to to help our communities, especially, you know, in my community of Gariaha, where we have the Russian olives. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there public comments? Mr. Schreiber, if you have a comment, you'll have three minutes, please, to make your comment.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Manager Stark, as a 50-year resident of San Juan County, you know, I've always been proud of the county's can-do attitude, always looking forward to meeting new challenges and opportunities that kind of set the Four Corners apart from so many other areas. You know, my work, when I was there, included over two decades as the county's insurance broker. So I'm glad to see Bobby in there today. But that work took me all over the US and Europe. I was always glad to be a resident of such a forward-looking community and come home. Listening to Secretary Cottrell Propst and Forester McCarthy today, and then the thoughtful questions and answers that were raised and asked, it seems as though this is an opportunity to address climate change and it's something that could open new doors for our friends and neighbors there in San Juan County. But like opening any new door, I would want to be careful what's behind it. That's why I appreciated the chairwoman and the commissioners that they raised some areas that I think we would all like to have the administration and their experts answer as we go forward through this coming stakeholder process. You know, when we ask questions about programs like 30 by 30, I think we can expect thorough, we should expect thorough and exact answers, not just from the state representatives, but also from Secretary of the Interior Deb Holland. You know, because this is another unique thing about 30 by 30 and, you know, the unique nature of the Four Corners area. Secretary Holland is a native in New Mexico. And I think she'd be a real ally in getting all of our questions answered. For those of you who do know her, she is famous for cutting issues down to the bone and putting landowners' concerns first, above everything. So Secretary Cottrell Propst today outlined kind of a detailed, robust process, understand this potential opportunity for this can-do community and this county. So I certainly look forward to participating in that process and thank each of you for giving me a chance to speak today. So I certainly look forward to participating in that process and thank each of you for giving me a chance to speak today.
All right, so need to go back into open session? Do you want to?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move. We come out of closed session. Matters discussion, the closed meeting, we're limited only to those specified in the motion for closure.
Okay, Joe, I have a motion.
I'd second that.
All right, do all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, so now we came out and, so is that it? Okay, meeting adjourned. Oh, almost.